On channel 27 and our local channel 27 YouTube through the PCTV. We just would like to let you know that there will be. I apologize.
No worries.
It's hard to start at seven o'clock, right?
Always in order.
Anyway, I apologize for that, but we will be televised. This is televised live and we will be having a public comment. We'll have three minute windows and the chair will direct us with that. So with that, I turn it to Chair Benjamin to start the official meeting.
Thank you and good luck, Bridgette. I'd like to call the October 27th meeting to order. If you would, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, Bridgette? Roll call, please, Bridgette.
All right, my mute is not working. Okay, Commissioner Polgar.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present.
Commissioner Holt.
Here.
Vice Chair Riddick.
I'm here.
And Chair Benjamin.
I'm also here. Thank you. So the first order of business tonight is consideration of some draft minutes. And I know that Bridgette has distributed revised version of the September eighth minutes. So perhaps we should start with that. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to the revised version? If not, could I have a motion to approve, please?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Polgar. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Polgar. I think she froze. Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Holt. Vice Chair Riddick.
Yes.
Chair Benjamin.
Yes.
And I just was going to ask sir if she's.
I'm back. My connection must be very bad. It froze for a long time. Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion approved.
Thank you very much. And then we have the October 13, 2020 minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve those?
I move we approve those minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Roll call, please, Bridgette.
Commissioner Polgar.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes, and it was Commissioner Holt who seconded the motion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick.
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin.
But they look so much alike. Yes.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Now we move on to the public comment section of our meeting. This is the portion of our meeting where anyone who is here in the audience, who would like to speak to the planning commission on an item which is actually not on tonight's agenda, but on any other thing that they want to talk with us about is welcome to do so. And so the question to Bridgette is, do we have anyone who is interested in making such a comment?
I see none.
Do we have anyone out there watching?
Yes, we have five attendees.
Five, excellent. Okay. So we're not missing anything if they're out there. And there are no written submissions for public comment either?
Not that I see.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to open and close the public comment section of our meeting. And we'll move on to the public hearing items. The first of which concerns investigative geotechnical boring in the vicinity of the landfill owned by the County of San Mateo. And I'm guessing that that's probably Brittany's idea.
Yes, it is. Let me go.
No time.
Share my screen here. All right, so good evening commissioners. This is a proposal from the San Mateo County for a boring exploration in the closed Hafn Bay landfill that is on the coastal bluffs and just south of Poplar Street. The general project area is outlined in yellow here. So we are bringing this to you tonight. As the project does require a coastal development permit, the city has found that geotechnical borings have been exempt from CDP requirements in the past, where they have been further inland in other locations in the city. But in this case, the proposed boring locations are within 100 feet of the sea cliff, which does trigger a CDP requirement in our municipal code. The geotechnical borings will occur in five locations. There are two on the bluff toe and three on the bluff top. All locations are above the mean height tideline. And this was included in the county's application materials and then discussed with coastal commission staff during our standard procedure for notifying them of any new CDP applications. So this is within the city's permitting jurisdiction. So the three bluff top borings will be accessed a little differently from the bluff toe borings. So the three bluff top locations will be staged at the Poplar Street, or sorry, the Poplar Beach parking lot in the area here and accessed via the coastal trail. Whereas the bluff toe borings will be accessed along the beach as the equipment cannot access from the Poplar Beach parking lot because of the new stairs that are in. So they will have to use the nearest ramp access, which is at the Francis State Beach Park parking lot area. So this would require traversing down to the proposed boring locations along the beach area. The project is anticipated to take five days. So there will be temporary public access impacts. The county has proposed to have a suite of best management practices in place as well as construction personnel and a biological monitor implemented throughout the project construction to make sure that any biological impacts are avoided during project construction as well as ensure that public safety is maintained. Sorry, I have a few more things. So just a few notes on process. We do anticipate this to be exempt from CEQA. The county did do an environmental checklist to run through the points where there might be potential for impacts. They have prepared some biological constraint studies based on the California Natural Diversity Database and other biological information that was readily available. And we do anticipate additional biological information to be provided and to further support the CEQA exemption. We are recommending that this project is continued to a date certain as we do still anticipate receiving some of that additional information. But we are here to hold a public hearing, as was duly noticed, to see what the planning commissioners have any concerns about, hear public comment on and hear from the county. We do have a representative from the county Public Works, Kristoff Lissage. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, is here with us tonight. And he will hopefully be able to answer any clarifying questions that you might have. And I will wrap it up.
Okay, thank you. So as is our custom, why don't we see if any of the planning commissioners have any clarifying questions that staff might be able to answer or could be the grist for any comments that the applicant would like to make so that we can get them on the table and make the process a little bit more efficient? So clarifying questions.
I have some clarifying questions. I've. I was always under, so I, like three of my other commissioners, I live just down the street from the landfill. And I've always been under the impression that the landfill ended east of where the coastal trail is now. In looking at the map on page two, 132, page two of nine in the report that we got, I am alarmed at how close the, what appears to be the landfill is to where we're currently experiencing pretty significant erosion, I gotta say. So I like to confirm the landfill actually goes to the area outlined in orange. I'm, if we could get some input on that.
Staff?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and pull the PowerPoint back up so we can look at that while we're discussing. And Bridgette, if you wouldn't mind bringing Kristoff over into the, what are we called, the panelists? He should be on here.
So in the, in the map that you've got, what he was referring to as an orange line in our package is sort of that yellow line that snakes along very close to the bluff, right, Rick?
That's correct. I mean, this, this, this chart, this is another chart that also it's a little more complicated. It's a little more busy, but it's the same. The yellow outline is the same. And gotta say, it's, we're trying to understand what the green line means, what the orange, what the yellow line means and what the blue lines mean. So that would be helpful.
Very good.
Yeah, so I can take a first swipe at that and see if Kristoff has anything to add. So it is my understanding from the legend, which I'm sorry, is cut off from this image that you're looking at here. But, but orange line does represent the eastern, or sorry, the western extent of the landfill. And agreed it is alarming. This is an area that the county has identified as significantly vulnerable to sea level rise in their 2018 assessment. And one of the purposes of this, this study is to gain understanding of the substrate and soil stability and help determine future possibilities for addressing the landfill and this, this risk that sea level rise and wave run up will pose.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
We can, welcome.
Yeah, so hi, this is Kristoff Lissage with the Department of Public Works at the county of San Mateo. I'm one of the project managers on this project from the county's Public Works Department. So we've had several studies done in this area. If you look at the map that's pictured right now, the area outlined in green, so that's that lower kind of square triangle area and then the one near the bluff. That's the historical limits of the fill. As part of the clean closure study, we had a geophysical survey performed. And so what that does is they put a bunch of spikes in the ground and then they run current. And then based on what comes back is where the limit was delineated. That is pictured in yellow or it looks orange on my screen. And so that's not a for sure limit of the waste. That's our just general preliminary investigation based on the budgeting we have. That still has to be supplemented with additional geo, with additional borings as part of the work that we're proposing. And then just further field investigation to actually determine the limits of, the westernly limits of the cells.
Are you saying that the waste is flowing underground and moving? Or are you saying this is what you've mapped and it's contained within the structure of the landfill?
I wouldn't say it's flowing or moving. I think this is just the information that was, that we obtained using the geophysical survey. And that doesn't necessarily mean it's waste. It just means there was some kind of material underneath that resulted in some conductance that ended up being the limits as shown here. So the areas in green are the actual limits of the waste. And I mean, even that is fairly close to the bluff edges, you can see. So I mean, you know, these are based on historical records. So the, the area in green is based on a historical record, which may not be accurate. And so it may be that the actual waste is at the yellow lines. But until we do additional investigation, we cannot confirm that. This is just kind of our high level analysis to help us plan.
Okay, and so your test, the testing that you're doing is going to help you get greater understanding of what's going on here.
Yeah, so the, the proposed geotechnical borings are actually not intended to inform the clean closure study. They're strictly intended to give us a better understanding of the soil composition and characteristics so that we can get a geotechnical report developed. If we move forward with further evaluation, I believe that there are other types of borings that will look into waste profiles. But the intent of this project is not to determine or confirm the extent of the landfill. It's solely for geotechnical purposes.
And do you know what the timing is to look at the composition of the landfill material? Do you know when a study like that is going to be commissioned or on the schedule?
So we have, we're currently working on a high level clean closure study. That's going to include this information here and then the high level estimates of the costs to do a clean closure as well as any kind of environmental and permitting constraints. We should have that in the middle of 2021.
Okay, well, just, just as a, as a, as a citizen of our community, I can tell you that this area is experiencing erosion. I'm sure you guys are aware of it. The Seymour ditch water course has experienced significant erosion in the last 10 years. It's been mitigated significantly, but we're still seeing substantial erosion in this area, especially at HMBB3 and HMBB1. So I think it's, anything we can do to speed up the timeframe would be great. So your study is going to help us understand what's going on here, how likely this soil is to slough off?
Yeah, it is. So as part of the geotechnical study, we're going to get, they'll be looking into the slope stability analysis, which will help us understand, you know, likelihood of sloughing or landslides. They're also going to look at the erosion rate. With the intent of that is to determine based on, you know, like the retreat rate for the area and based on the mapping of where we think the landfill is, how much time do we have until landfill starts getting exposed?
Okay, so your, your question isn't a matter of if, it's a matter of when?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, you can see, as you said, we, I mean, we have, we do quarterly inspections of the landfill. As part of that inspection, we have somebody walk the beach and look at all these areas. So we have a pretty good understanding of the historical, you know, erosion and retreat rate. I mean, just walking the site, you can see that kind of articulated block is starting to show signs of wear. There's been, you know, historic little sloughs in the area. I mean, if you go down, like you said, by HMBB3, you can see the old culverts kind of perched, sticking out of the, the bluff. So I mean, we, you know, this has also been identified as an area of concern for, as a, you know, sea level rise and erosion. So we definitely anticipate that it's going to be an issue. We're just kind of trying to figure out how much time we have. And then as part of the geotechnical borings, what we can do in the interim if, if we do get into an emergency situation.
Okay, thank you.
You're muted, Jimmy. Chair Benjamin, sorry.
I apologize. Thank you. So other clarifying questions, I can't see other people. So if you have questions, please just speak up. Commissioner Polgar, nothing from you tonight. Am I still muted? Okay. Very good. Okay, thank you. I, I had a couple. And again, I, you know, I, to some extent, I think I, I gather your, your comment about trying to understand the composition of the material is, is helpful as opposed to like the toxicity or the waste profile or something that might come up in a future, in a future boring study. Do we have reasons to believe that the composition of the soil, other than the existence of the landfill, but the composition of the soil itself is different than what we saw in the ag profile that was part of the packet? That is, the, the Conservation District Soil Study, which I would imagine was based on similar borings.
I have not looked at the ag study that you're referring to. My understanding is depending on where we are on that bluff, the soil varies between just what was there native and what was part of the articulated block project. I believe like the soil near HMBB1 is more fill as part of that, the project to do that armoring. Whereas the soil composition between, or for B2 and B3 would probably be more native and what's typical for that area.
Okay. Benjamin, yes.
If I could, if I could jump on that one a little bit.
Director Doughty, welcome.
And only, only to say this is that recently, recently being in the last couple of years, did borings along the area to the south towards Smith Field. And what I can tell you is that, is that even in those borings in an area that seems pretty homogeneous in terms of, of the area, those borings came up different where the, where the clay lens was, the depths of clay lens, all the things with that. So I can, I can only say this to, 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 to deal with that is that, yes, it's a little different everywhere we go around there. It's uniquely different. We also did borings for the Seymour ditch. And those were, while I think a little more homogeneous, they're still not exactly homogeneous kind of boring. So I, I can't say from our experience, it's, you can't take probably those borings from anywhere else and just say this is the, this is the mirror image of that.
I understand. Thank you. I also wondered about the locations of the borings. I, I understood that one of the objectives of this study was to think about how much time we have, where I guess the implied event is that we start seeing the, the material of the landfill or we start seeing leachate from the landfill appearing on the, on the beach or evident on the bluff face. My impression was that we, that part of the reason this project had come to pass is that we were already experiencing some exposure of leachate, if nothing else. Am I mistaken about that? Has leachate not been observed?
I can confirm what are the person that does the quarterly inspections. But my understanding is no, we've, we've seen on the beach some, like a foam type substance come out of the landfill. But we, we've tested that and that did not have any leachate in it the last time I recall. But I can definitely follow up with, when I check in with him to confirm.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the real, the underlying question I'm trying to get to here is, I would imagine that the, you know, given the erosion rates that are observable in, you know, in linear studies, looking at, you know, the flyovers from the, the beach project, I'm imagining that there's some window of time that we might imagine the erosion to pull back to the point where the yellow lines are, which are these historical, you know, or some combination of history and best guesses of where the confines are. So I'm trying to get a sense of the return on investment, not so much because it's my money, it's your money. So you get to make those calls at some level. But in terms of understanding the impacts of the project. And, you know, I don't mean to be premature in thinking about that, what the impacts are. In the initial study that we received, there was some discussion about the potential for changes in the bluff, of course. And the framework for being concerned about that was the impact of personnels that were conducting the study. But as you know, this is a popular beach area. There was that nightmare in Orange County a year or so ago where a bluff face actually collapsed on someone and killed them. And obviously, none of us would want anything like that to happen anywhere, but especially not here. And so I'm trying to understand how to weigh the information, how you weigh the information that you're receiving about time versus the potential for destabilizing the bluff face as a result of the vibration secondary to the boring.
Right, so we, we walked the site with our design team that included geotechnical engineers. The locations of the borings was a combination of where we see, you know, where the existing bluff is showing or experienced signs of erosion. But based on their input and their experience, they don't believe that any kind of boring will do anything to destabilize the bluff. So I don't, if you're familiar with these, I mean, they're eight inch augers. So they're, they're not, you know, big borings. The machine that comes on like a, a big rig and it's like on the back of a big rig. And so in our experience, we've never had any issues with destabilizing. Just based on the historical area, it seems like the issues here is more wave run up and erosion as attributed to that as opposed to any kind of slip outs or landslides potential. So based on just our, you know, our geotechnical engineers, we don't, that didn't come up at all during any of our talks. So I don't think they think it's an issue at all.
Is there some proximity to the actual face of the bluff at which it would come up? Or is it just not feasible? Like even if they were drilling an inch away from the edge, they're saying no, could never happen.
I'm sure there is some kind of standard, you know, safety setback that they need to, that they need to adhere to. I, I don't know what that is. I'm not a geotechnical. But again, these, these locations on this map are not representative of the actual locations in the field. They're general locations. And so they'll go out there and make sure that wherever they put them still gets us the information we need. But make, is, you know, done through the best practices of, of getting this type of information.
Thank you. I also wondered about whether, it sounded like you were unclear on the eastern extent. You had some pretty good ideas about where the, sort of the landward extent of the, of the fill. Where these are the green, green, there's a trapezoid and a couple of green semi oval shapes. One that sort of is triangular. There's one shape that's sort of blue on this picture. Is that also considered part of the land? Yeah, that's the one. Can you tell me?
Yes, so the blue is the, a high conductivity area. Looking, you guys don't have the legend, but. Looking, you guys don't have the legend, but so the high connectivity areas are detailed in the report. So this is areas where waste decomposition products or subsurface fluids are concentrated or a combination of the two with the overall low concentration of metallic wastes. So this was obtained through our geophysical study. So this is just again, hits coming back from that survey saying there's something there without further evaluation, we, we can't confirm or deny what's there, if it's waste, if it's just something else. In terms of the eastern extents, we have the historical information of where the waste was filled. But at this point of the study, we're not going to be looking into that just because that, you know, we, we have a general idea of the amount of waste in the area and that's what we need to get our clean closure study. And then as far as the, the borings and things like that go, it's, you know, we don't, we don't need any on the eastern edge at this point.
So that would be a future subject is to figure out how far back we have to go.
Yeah, I mean, so the, the current clean closure study is very high level. It's like the 20,000 foot study. You know, it's just going to basically give us a roadmap of what needs to be done to further explore this and also help us understand the level of effort and give us a higher level cost estimate. From that, we're hoping that we can use that to obtain additional grants to do further analysis to get us to a point where we can actually have a project. But at this point, the county, it does, you know, it's not on any of the county's projects. It's not programmed into anything. It's just, we want to be ready, should the opportunity arise for some grant funding to further explore.
Okay. I'll take a break from questions. Colleagues, did additional questions come up?
I had a couple, Chair Benjamin.
I think I heard Sarah and then Commissioner Ruddock, Vice Chair Ruddock.
And so, and I apologize for not turning on my video. My connectivity is really bad tonight. So I had a couple of follow up questions. In, in terms of, I heard Chris, Kristoff, that you had mentioned that this, these borings that we're looking at tonight, these are not for the clean closure study. So I wanted to understand kind of what, because you talked about needing these information. And, and I want to understand what will this inform for moving forward, for whatever path you're headed down.
Sure. So just to give you a little history and context of how we got to the boring. So we had, we received a grant through our office of sustainability to look into areas for potential climate vulnerability. So this site was identified and so we used that funding to start the clean closure study. As part of that study, we decided to add several tasks to the scope of work being the department that's responsible for monitoring and reporting on the landfill. Part of that work was adding this a memo that would provide us with recommendations and interim measures. Should there be an emergency and we need to go out there and address any kind of erosion or slip outs? So that's where the borings are required. The borings are going to provide us with a geotechnical report. In that geotechnical report, the engineer can use that to provide us with some preliminary options of what we can do to armor the bluff in an emergency situation. You know, at no point is the county considering armoring the bluff at any point in time. We understand, you know, the course of commission's view on those kinds of projects. And so it's just to kind of get our ducks in a row so that if we are in this situation where we have a really bad storm, we end up seeing erosion more than we have right now. At least we have some preliminary information and preliminary options that we can explore.
Okay, so, so this part is really for that potential emergency?
Correct. Yeah, we don't, we can complete the clean closure study without doing any of these boring. We can complete the clean closure report without doing any of these borings.
Okay, that, that, I, I think I was a little confused because the way that the, for instance, the some of the materials in our, you know, for, for this item tonight framed it as this being part of the clean closure study. And, and in fact, that was part of one of the questions is that, for instance, in the hazard, there's a hazard document. Sorry, I'm having lots of connectivity issues. I'm trying to get my computer to respond. Okay, hazard mitigation evaluation. It, it talked about how there were two options and one of them would be a full clean closure and then the other would be or, or, well, and actually it wasn't even clear to me. That was another follow up question is or is it that the options looking forward are the clean closure? Or the armoring? Or is it some, some, is it both? Is the armoring only in an emergency situation? So those are, it's not, it wasn't quite clear. And I worry that from the public in the, if the public's reviewing these documents, they might not understand kind of what the purpose of these borings that are part of, you know, under consideration are really for. And so it's just a kind of a clarification may be necessary.
Sure. Yeah, no, I, so there are two separate projects. They, it's not an either or. It's, it's obviously the county's preference would be to get rid of the landfill. We just obvious, you know, we have a limited solid waste fund that doesn't get any revenue. So right now it's just being used to monitor and maintain. And then the orings and any kind of armoring again would just be an interim measure in case of an emergency. You know, the county would never pursue armoring the beach for any reason.
Okay, thank you.
So, so let's double click on this because we're already on this topic. What are we going to do? Like, okay, this, like, if you don't, if you don't armor, are we going to remove the waste? I mean, what is the remediation plan here? Because as you've said, it's not a question of if, it's a question of when this gets exposed. And nobody knows what's in here.
Right. Yeah. I mean, I think that's the whole point of this whole effort. Nobody's really looked at this landfill in terms of those options and what's available to us. And so we're hoping we, the, the clean closure report as well as the interim report will give us a better understanding of exactly what's going on out there. How much time we really have? I think the geotechnical borings and the kind of retreat rate calculation and now knowing the potential extensive of the landfill gives us a really good idea of how much time we potentially have. And then based on that, I think we'll, you know, that will lead to further discussions.
Commissioner Riddick, you were very patient. If I can interrupt you, Rick, I don't know if you got what you needed, but I wondered.
Sorry, I think John Doughty had something to add there.
Director Doughty.
Thanks. You know, here's kind of context. We actually, you'll, you'll, you'll know the name Nichols Consulting Engineer N C E. They actually about a year ago now reached out to staff not from the perspective of their work on Poplar in the, in the traditional sense of the, of the park and the, and the beach work. But they also are a consultant to the Cal Recycle folks. And, and they alerted us to, to the fact that Cal Recycle does have some funding that is available for clean clean closures and other related issues and, and their work. They saw this based on the concerns that you're raising and the community has seen Joe Chamberlain has been talking about for many years. Said, you know, why don't we look at, at trying to get in queue to talk about the money and to deal with this? What we found interesting was that at the same time, San Mateo County staff were in the process of looking at doing a clean closure report. And so we were very happy to find that they were thinking in the same like manner that says that perhaps we can't seal this up and keep this locked away. But we need to maybe look at alternatives such as a clean closure. Recognizing that the cost of clean closure is, is going to be unbelievably expensive, but the cost of the environment put a price tag on that, the cost to trying to maintain and deal with this in the way it is. I think those are all things that we all agreed to. So I just wanted to put context that, that, that we're, you know, we're very happy that the county stepped up and initiated this without our actually engaging them specifically for this work and this grant that they received. But also keep in mind that this is something that even though it's not the city's issue of property or, or closure, we recognize the importance of this to the community and to the environment. And so we are engaged with this as well. So I, you know, part of that was just to say, you know, give some credit where it's due, which is, hey, let's, let's be, you know, I think we're all happy that we're here talking about this. And, but we are also looking at it from, from our perspective as well. And frankly, we have a very, very, very selfish motive as well, which is to try to figure out how to fix Seymour, call it what you want, I call it a ditch. But waterway. But you know, there, we think that there are ways, you know, as far as, as clean closure to maybe re refocus some of the flows that used to go through this area more natural and work its way back to, to the water. So we're selfish in that regard, which is that we see this as a, as a possibility for getting back to more natural flow through this area from what now is flowing in more ditch. And to address a very significant issue of that as well. So I, I, I know that was a long answer. Sorry, but I, I think I just wanted to give perspective on, on where public, our city public works has been, why we're, you know, and while the borings, I think have been clearly kind of shown to not be directly related to the clean fill and clean closure issue with that. It does provide some information and I think some critical information that would be beneficial as we look at the area and moving forward. So, but I understand there's a distinction between whether that's part of the clean closure or not. I think you've heard the answer.
And I, I don't think I've heard any commissioners expressed hostility towards the project. They've just
No, no, not at all.
They're very interested.
Yeah, yeah. I, that was more from the perspective of, 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 of saying that the city, the, the, the city is very interested in the clean closure. We think the community is very interested in it. And so just, just saying.
Got it.
We're, we're, we're open to working. We have been trying, you know, working through this and, and want to be partners and collaborators and, and trying to find a solution here.
Rick, I didn't want to cut you off, but Vice Chair Riddick was in line.
No, no, I, I appreciate that. And it's, it's appropriate to follow decorum. I did misspeak. It is in our L U P, which we recently adopted. Seymour Water Course is the terminology that we use in our planning process. The I, and I, this is not an attack. It's nobody here created this landfill. I doubt anybody here was involved with its initial closure. The reality is that two thirds of Half Moon Bay's economy is driven by the tourist economy. And having a leaking landfill which could go downstream into the Ritz area is a problem. So we just need to figure out how to marshal the appropriate resources to look at this. And all the planning stuff we've done for the last five years, I gotta say, I'm flabbergasted by this. Not having seen anything like this in the previous planning processes we've been through. So I, I think this is something that, thank you for bringing it all to our attention. We need to move more quickly to address this is my concern. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure each of the planning commissioners will be reaching out to their respective council members on this issue because the, this, this is something that's definitely concerning. And, and we can talk about this stuff and I don't have any other further, any further questions. I'm just again, flabbergasted by this. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. And I don't have any further questions, Jimmy.
Thank you. Vice Chair Riddick.
Thanks. Well, lots of Half Moon Bay residents have been urging the county to do something about this old landfill for, for many years. So of, of course, it's a good thing that we're meeting here and considering this early step. And I feel that thanks to Kristoff, I understand now better than I did when I first digested the staff report, what the purpose of these five borings are. It's to discover the strength of soil there and what, what could be done there in event of emergency. I wondered though, if the county has considered other possibilities for borings that might be informative. You know, it's, it's clear to those of us who've had the privilege of walking around out there for some years now, that the most dramatic erosion that's happening in that area is not along that, that beach cliff. It's, it's the, the banks of Seymour Water Course between the bridge and the beach, extremely dramatic erosion. And that concerns me. I wonder if we, if the county may not want to measure the strength of soil on that south bank of, of, I'm sorry, the north bank of Seymour Water Course in, in a case of emergency. I, my concern there is is twofold because you observe that bear patch in the southwest corner of this project area. And no vegetation has grown there in the last 30 years. So I, if you guessed that there was waste underlying there, I wouldn't argue with you. And, and again, the erosion of that north bank from Seymour Water Course to the north has been spectacular over the last 20 years, unfortunately.
Yeah, it is the fastest changing land form in the city of Half Moon Bay and has been for decades. So the question is how to trade off the bluff face changes versus the bank stability of the Seymour Water Course? Yes?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Thank you. So I Director Doughty was speaking about other borings that the city has conducted in the past for other, other project needs. And we actually have conducted borings on the north side of the Seymour Water Course after the bridge was put in and the headcut on that water course caused dramatic erosion that needed to be addressed with that emergency permit work that was installed. So I'm not sure that this is exactly the area that you have in mind, but there is some information already taken through, through that kind of investigation. And if you want to know more about it, I, I think we could bring that back since we're recommending continuance. And we could put a paragraph in the staff report about it. We do want to be clear, we, we pitched the staff report a little bit. And we were, we misunderstood some of it. And so we really appreciate county staff being here and Kristoff. We've been, we had a good phone call with him today and, and other email exchanges for providing this clarification about the purpose of this particular investigative project. So we're going to, in, in your continuance, should you, should you move to do so? We will make sure that those materials are clarified.
You still have the four commissioner ready.
Well, I'd like to discuss that Seymour Water Course north bank further, but I, I wouldn't say I have clarifying questions at this moment.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Holt, anything, anything come to mind now? Okay. So this covered a lot of the questions that I would have raised earlier, but with respect to the borings that are on the sandy beach, B far and B five. I'm imagining that that's more of a baseline. So you have a basis for saying that there's some change. It's hard for me to see how they contribute to your sense of timing of how much time you have before you need to act on the prod, you know, take some action with respect to the project.
Yeah. So that just gives us additional information on the subsurface conditions. Yeah. So that just gives us additional information on the subsurface conditions at the toe. Of the cliff. So a lot of times when we design these types of armoring, we do go below the sand level. In order to make it structurally secure. And so that'll just give us additional information to be able to have a more thorough design. Based on the conditions there.
Commissioner Holt, did I cut you off? Did you actually have questions? I thought I heard you say no questions. I'm pretty sure that was a no questions. Your, your mic.
I'm sorry, my mic might be a little bit quiet tonight, but no, we're good.
Perfect. Thank you. And then Kristoff. With respect to the locations, some of those are behind the, the concrete, right? Like I gather H and B B two is behind the, the, the installed wall, the articulated concrete. And so I just want to, if the goal of this is to assess how much time we have when we're looking behind the concrete. Then one of the potential threats is that there's a failure of the concrete. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think part of what we've seen is the blocks are starting to move. Like if you've been out there and, you know, recently, not to a point where we're. Concerned about it, but there has been. Signs, signs of where I think we've experienced the wave run up, you know, coming closer and closer to that block. Additionally, we don't really have good records of when those blocks were put in of what the soil conditions were behind them. Because this is definitely an area of concern. I mean, they were installed. At some point, it was probably like a natural drainage, you know, at that point. And then it was articulated up. So we, we just want to get a good understanding of what exactly the soil is behind those. Should those fail so that we can, again, be prepared.
Would one of the results of this sort of how much time do we have study be? Some kind of signpost that would give us a warning that we should be paying attention independently of how much time it may allow for the clean fill. Just so as a matter of public safety, we know how to tell people, look, it's time for us to stay away from this area because it's not safe anymore.
Yeah, I think as part of the geotechnical report, we'll definitely have an assessment of the stability of the bluff. Again, I don't, I don't see any immediate concerns or any history of, you know, landslides or or major slipouts. But definitely we'll, we'll have a discussion about the slope stability as part of that report.
Okay, that was my last question. We have, this is a public hearing item. So.
Can I ask one more clarifying question?
Absolutely, Commissioner Polgar.
Thank you. So Kristoff, I, and maybe this is also for staff. I saw that the borings would be filled with, there was a kind of some different options. So I gather that that will be decided depending on what makes most sense. Maybe in, in past, it sounds like there've been borings on the north side of Seymour Ditch. Sorry, Seymour Water Course. And so I wondered what was done with those in terms of filling them? And what the experience, like was there any, were there any lessons learned? Because one of the concerns I have is that even in just doing the borings, once you concentrate the water. Not to create new spots for infiltration, kind of behind the, down into those bluffs. So that, that I just want to understand kind of how that decision will be made and whether there's some lessons learned from past borings that have been done out here.
Yeah, I mean, so we have to get a geotechnical drilling permit through the county's environmental health. As part of that permit, they have certain requirements of how you destruct the boring or well. Typically, they allow, depending on the depth of the boring, there's several different options. The typical one is we inject it with grout. And that's how it gets filled.
That. I'm not, well, maybe when we have discussion, I can express my opinion about that.
Very good. Other questions? If not. I'd like to proceed, if we could, to the public hearing and then we have at least one letter. But is anyone in the, that is a member of the public interested in speaking on this item, Bridgette? Or Brittany, whomever? Hello?
I do see one hand.
Yes, I see Dave Olson's hand up and I will, I go ahead and move him into the speaking mode.
All right, we will open the public hearing for this item. It sounds like there's no objection from the commission. So. Chair recognizes the first speaker.
Mr. Olson, you should be able to address it.
Thank you. My, I'm on the Mid Coast Community Council, but I'm speaking as a private citizen here. And I apologize for having missed most of this item. So this may already have been addressed, but while I realize this is a, an application solely for the. Boring to determine the situation. I'm, I'm act, I'm rather upset by the assumption that the solution to this problem is going to be armoring. As you heard me say during other meetings, I'm very, very opposed to armory. It's very clear that everywhere we've armored our coast, we have caused other problems down current. And so I'm hoping that the planning commission will make very clear to the county. That armory is not to be the preferred solution. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. I'll just clarify that the project is not proposing anything. There's existing armoring in place. But I think we're, I didn't notice any particular proposal at this time, but I appreciate the concern.
It was at the front, at least.
It was at the front of the report.
Okay, it looks like I don't have anyone else.
Perhaps we should get the Committee for Green Foothills letter into the record.
Yes, please do that. We received that late this afternoon and conveyed the letter to the commission. I understand that Bridget also posted it to our agenda site. Brittany Cuzzolino and I both took a look at it. Brittany's already addressed the first point of the letter, which was. Concerned that this proposed project was with, with respect to the beach. Location borings was, would be in the coastal commission jurisdiction. It is not on. We have communicated with coastal commission about this with, with their staff. Understanding though, that maybe some equipment would need to be conveyed over the beach in some locations that. Might transect the high tide line. I, we are not under the impression that the commission. Was focused on that when we discussed this with them. So we believe that this project is in the city's jurisdiction. And that it's the planning commission using the city's L C P is the standard of review here. And. We note there were some comments about consistency for labeling and we will talk with Kristoff and his, his team later. And just make sure that we get that cleared up. There was also a comment about.
For access.
Temporary, yeah, we, we wouldn't normally seek any kind of compensation from an applicant. Especially a public applicant, applicant who is trying to. Protect public access at significant cost for a long period of time and. You know, this is something the commission can discuss, but I would never, ever recommend this for this particular case. This is a five day project and we want to be reasonable about expectations for. What the impact actually is versus what the long term benefit would be from, from staff's perspective. And then we do, we would like clarification along with the comment we. Kristoff could either tonight or when it comes back to you and we, we will. We will make sure that we compile all the questions that you have that weren't able to answer tonight. On, but with regards to the timeline of when, when they would actually do this investigative project. And, and just also want to clarify beyond the, this letter for, for the public comment. That the only discussion about armoring tonight was relative to an emergency. And staff is happy to talk to Mr. Olson later in week or next week. About the real intent of this project, which if you missed the discussion about a clean closure of a landfill is, is a really significant. A scope for, for the project. And so I think that covers the Green Foothills letter. We're also happy to, to talk to the author of that letter and. I clarify any of this, this material. I don't see them present tonight.
Okay, thank you. Bridgette, are there any other members of the public who wanted to speak on this item this evening?
I don't see any.
And any additional emails have come in to anyone?
Not in my box.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission for discussion. And I heard several commissioners sounded like they had some concerns. I, I want to begin where Commissioner Polgar left off. Because it sounded like she had a good train going.
Um. Well, no, I, I, I guess my overall thoughts are, one is that I am very excited to see that the county. Has moved forward with getting a grant to, to better understand the clean closure options. I, I think that's a big step and I know how hard it is to get things moving on a project like this. And get grant funding. So I'm actually very excited about this moving forward. I do think there were some, you know, and I asked the questions about the clarification of kind of what the drilling is for or the boring, sorry. Boards are for. I do think that might be a little bit confusing and to the, the public as they're reviewing this and it's just something to keep in mind. And, and it, you know, it is, I do think it's, 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 it's important to be forthright about the fact that it is. It is for helping us understand or helping the county understand what, what would they need to do if there was an emergency? And they did have to do some sort of armoring. I, of course, am very opposed to it. I've heard Kristoff say multiple times, the county does not want to do that. I, I hear that, see that also in the documents that I read as well. So I, I get that. I mean, they wouldn't be pursuing a clean closure analysis if they weren't interested in pursuing that. So. So anyways, those are my overarching thoughts. I do have, I, you know, I, after thinking more about the bor, borings, I mean, they're. I, you know, I'm guessing that if the filling them with grout worked previously, if, you know, I, I don't know, that sounds okay. I, it seems a little bit bizarre to me to put more stuff that might have to just be dug out later. In there, but I guess I don't have a strong opinion. I would like, though, that if the city or the whoever else has done borings in the area. Has had experience with what, you know, what worked and didn't work to at least be sharing that with the county. So that we can learn from past experience. I mean, it's always odd to me that, and this is because I'm not a geotechnical engineer, why borings are necessary? Because I feel like you could walk around to where the erosion is happening at Seymour Ditch and see the profile of the soil. Which is eroded very recently, but I, I, I don't know enough about geotech to understand, to be able to, to make that case. The only other thing that I would bring up in, this was when we were looking at that map that was up for quite a while. When I think Brittany might have been sharing her screen, they, there was a kind of a trapezoid of green. Where there's landfill, you know, material along just north of Seymour Ditch. And so one other consideration is that in thinking about emergencies, and I think that the city has already been working on this, but. I wasn't sure if the county already knew enough in terms of the, the, the kind of soils and what's underneath. For if there's a sudden erosion, kind of unraveling along Seymour. I'm, I under, my guess is probably the only option is to put the water in a pipe in the interim. But I, I do, I think that that's maybe the sooner issue in terms of a, a problem. With exposure of the landfill material is along Seymour Water Course. And so that's something to consider. I'm, I definitely am very excited also about what John was talking about, the, the city. Looking at ways long term in partnership with this clean closure of how to maybe have the water from Seymour. Follow the more historic kind of what was natural historically in terms of heading further north and into this area that is now the, the closed landfill. So those are, you know, some of my, my thoughts. I don't have, I, you know, it, it's, I, I don't. I, I think that the, the staff and I think. Kristoff, you've addressed my clarification questions. So if I think of anything else, but those are my overall thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Holt?
No, I've just, I will just echo Commissioner Polgar's comments and. Follow up on the concern expressed by Commissioner Hernandez. So I'm glad to see the team in board and appreciate coming to the.
Very good. Commissioner Hernandez.
Yeah, and I think I've. I've raised the questions I have, I think, as we look forward, I, I think we should. I think we should ask city staff and I'm not sure what's appropriate to this juncture. This is an agenda item. So, so I do feel. That it's appropriate to raise a discussion of what are we going to do about this? Right? And the, the county moves at the county's speed. And as a community, we need to move at a speed that's appropriate for us. From my perspective. I've known this landfill has been here since before we bought our property in Half Moon Bay. But again, I didn't know how close the. Landfill was to the eroding bluff tops, the fast, quickly eroding bluff tops. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't create some kind of task force with the city council. With the planning commission to go look at this and work with city staff a little more closely because. This isn't, I mean, this is something like what we've done with the Hernandez Bridge. Other things where the community is really alarmed and concerned. This is one of those few situations where we actually have an opportunity to get in front of this and deal with it. We may have six months, we may have 10 years, we don't know. But when I look at this erosion, I look at the erosion at the Ritz Carlton, I was just there and I see that the pillars are exposed again. There's rapid erosion happening in key points in the city. We need to get in front of this. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't. Take some action or ask city staff to come back with a recommendation on how we as public servants can address this. So that, that, that's my discussion point is what are we going to do? Because I don't want to wait until. The Ritz falls into the ocean or this dump. Gets exposed and we've got affluent rolling out into the ocean and nobody wants to come visit Half Moon Bay.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Vice Chair Reddick.
Well, I, I echo Commissioner Hernandez's sense of urgency. And I applaud the county. Pursuing these steps to do these borings and gather data about the state of the cliffs out there and to. And to start helping the process of being prepared for emergency erosion. As Commissioner Polgar said, I agree 100% that. If, if an emergency situation comes up that is, involves the exposure of, of waste in the old landfill. It seems to me much more likely to come from that north bank of Seymour Water Course than from the, the ocean cliff. And I, I would, I, I, I don't know the data behind the borings that the city has done there. I remember when we. And I, I would, I, I, I don't know the data behind the borings that the city has done there. I remember when we discussed that and we put some limits on the areas where those borings were to take place. But if, if we learned anything there about the likely rate of future erosion of that bank of Seymour Water Course, I'd be, I'd be very eager to hear it. And I would, I'd be very much in favor if, I think Kristoff said that the, the county very likely will do more mapping, specific mapping of the waste beyond this borings project. And I would love it if they included in that survey that southwest corner of this project where no vegetation has grown for the last third years. I, I, I feel that we're, if there's going to be an emergency, my, my money would be bet on that being the spot. So I applaud any efforts by the county and perhaps new efforts that, that we should undertake in Half Moon Bay to, to deal with this and be prepared for such an emergency.
Thank you. Vice Chair Riddick, I'm, I should be up now. So a lot of wisdom coming from the commission tonight, I think, as, as is often the case here. So a couple of thoughts, I agree that in planning for the landfill, how much time you have question, the relevance of the information we've gathered on the Seymour should be relevant and integrated into your decision-making process beyond what you get from whatever borings are taking here. In the initial study section of the, of the packet, now I have a better understanding of some of the elements that were included in some of the elements that were more lightly covered. It struck me that it might be that some of these areas where borings are to be considered could be coastal strand or other environmentally sensitive areas. And so it's not that the impacts would be huge, but I think, you know, my sense was maybe they weren't picked up in the initial study. Similarly, in the environmental area, we have some probably more extensive records of habitat for listed species than it sounds like was available to some of your consultants. You might want to have a look at some of the maps and our existing plans. There are some California Natural Diversity Database reports that have been evolving and I'm, I, again, I don't know that these are showstoppers, but just in terms of the due diligence to make sure that people know what to look for so they don't, you know, we anticipate and avoid trouble. No need to borrow trouble. Might be good to get that. I have had the experience, maybe other planning commissioners and staff are not aware necessarily that this is not the first landfill in Half Moon Bay that has been subject to some kind of remediation. And the investigation or remediation process sadly is, it is a rather long process. And whether the landfill is exposed by a wave action or the erosion of a water course or a, or a creek, you know, it's certainly something that we can avoid. But in that, in the case I'm thinking of the, the mitigations to manage the risk were limited to a very small, well, to about half of the, the landfill. It was a substantial project and it did good work, but it was in an area where there was adjacent landfill that was not mitigated. And I think one of the reasons that you're seeing Commissioner Hernandez and Vice Chair Riddick and, and Commissioner Pogar all have some interest in being sure that the Seymour side of this landfill investigation is part of the analysis and the planning process that we're not ignoring that data if it's available or we're not getting data that we need if it's, if it is currently unavailable is so that we don't end up solving half the problem. And for your very worthwhile investment for which we are grateful, we don't get the long-term resolution. So I think that's also worthwhile. I would assume that if a product, if we were to have some emergency measure that were to involve a some kind of temporary arming as an emergency, but it would in fact be temporary. And that the, the sense of over the long term is that we're, we're not trying to go, you know, I don't think the community is excited about that prospect anymore than the, the member of the public from the MCC is excited about that, nor I, I suspect would you be. So I think those are my, oh, with respect to the borings, um, I, you know, I, I do think that the locations proximity to the, um, the bluff edge, as you say, it's some, you know, these aren't exact locations, but at some point they get close enough that it seems like they could pose some, some kind of risk. In the initial study, the analysis of exposure of humans to risks associated with earth instability were focused on the workers who were doing the boring. And I'm not saying that that's not important. Of course, that's very important. But in a visitor serving location, we should at least in the IS include consideration of the prospect that that could have some adverse impact on the wellbeing of visitors who are on the beach or walking on the bluff. So I hope that the IS can be expanded. And maybe it was there and I just missed it. Totally open to that. I, this was a 400-page document, so maybe I missed it. But I think that that, that generalizing the sense of impacts beyond the folks who are conducting the work as well, and then expanding it to saying, what is the potential impact on people who are visiting the area who are, you know, after the work is done? I do think that the, um, the idea of, of capping, filling and capping the bore was something that solid addresses Commissioner Pogar's early concern about the transmissibility of water between layers. It is certainly true that if you put in a, a grout or a solid material, at some point you have to take it out. But it sounds like as part of a clean landfill process, that would be happening anyway. And if, if the county comes to the conclusion that it's no project, at some point, you know, to the extent that some of those boards are behind the, the, the blocks, the interlocking blocks, it's clear that something will have to happen there. So there's not a no pro- doesn't seem like there's a no project alternative for the indefinite future in that area. In the other areas, if we were to expose a, uh, you know, just as we've exposed the foundations at the Ritz as a result of bluff top erosion and had to remove those, I'd imagine the grout would have to be removed here as well. I think those were my other comments. I'd like to offer staff an opportunity to weigh in on the concerns that have been raised by the commission. And some of them are probably public works related. So I'll let Jill and John and Brittany figure out how they want to manage that response process.
Well, first of all, um, we want to make sure that Kristoff, if, if there's any open-ended questions or any clarif- clarification that you would like from the planning commission in, in terms of coming back. And we're, we're seeking to come back at your next meeting. Do let us know. I know that John Doughty wants to give a little more information about potential funding sources and the context for sea level rise planning in San Mateo County.
Thanks, Jill. First, I'll say we, we will certainly pull the, the boring information data that we worked on with Seymour and share that with, with the county staff. And I, as part of that, we'll find out what kind of fill that we used. I, I'm, I would be about 99% sure that it was the standard grout, slurry grout that, that fills most of the bores. But we'll, we'll, we can find out what, what they used as part of that information. The bigger picture issue, and I, I appreciate all of your concerns and issues. This is something that, that Jill and, and again, many community members have raised for, for many years. We pushed very hard as to make sure that this site was identified in the county's sea level rise assessment. And as a significant issue there, I don't know that if we had not pushed as hard, it would have actually risen to the top. There are a lot of issues and a lot of problems out there. The sand plant, Highway One, you know, and name your, name, name your sea level rise problem and, 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 and we have it. This one is, is one of those. So on the bigger picture, I, I wanted to just say this is that council member Riddick in particular is a member, seated member of the board of the new Sea Level Rise Agency. San Mateo County put forth and we are funding that. I have reached out probably several months ago now with the new executive director who I've worked with in a prior position when he was working on San Francisco Creek, but I have a relationship with him. We all, many of us do. But we have spoken to him about moving forward with a combined basically Seymour landfill, sea level rise project that would look at this in the big picture and look at trying to find a funding source and/or even matching funds through a a, a project with the county to move this forward. So I think there's, there are ways to, to start to look at this. We have been doing that. And I, I understand this is sort of coming to a head tonight as a, as a shock to, to some frankly. I, I've been looking for those, some detail, those same details about exactly where we think the, the boundaries of the cells are. And when I saw these just in the last couple of weeks, I was a little shocked myself. I did not think that they were as close or potentially as close as that. So anyway, I, I just wanted to just put it out there that, that this is not, not on our radar screen. Obviously, this is going to be an incredibly difficult, challenging effort, significant dollars. And it is going to take more than what I think the city or the county alone could generate out of that. And so we're going to have to be looking at leveraging that and working, I think, with the Sea Level Rise Agency and, and, and tying this into a broader coalition, which would include then looking at federal funding of various sources and state funding to make all of this work together. So you know, I just wanted to put that out and make sure that, that there is some, some understanding of that, that this is not something we've been just sitting and, and, and letting sit. And I, no one's accusing anybody of that. I just, you know, but sometimes this kind of, 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 of outlining the issue is important to make sure that, that folks around the community are aware of this. And so I thank you.
Kristoff, did you have anything else you wanted to address or just make sure that we've captured all the questions? We, one of the key things that we're, we are bringing back there, the county's wrapping up a site-specific Iowa, look at, at the left top area that we have to have to conform with our LCP, which is really the, the primary reason why we can't have a decision tonight. We do need that on the record. Um, but was there anything else, Kristoff?
No, yes, just thank you all for your time. Like Jill said, we are going to submit that field assessment with constraints and a more thorough look of exactly potential for cultural and sensitive species impacts. I guess to touch a little bit on the borings and the potential for those being exposed. I think just to kind of bring attention to the larger issue that if we're in a position where you guys are, are seeing the exposed borings, there's probably also exposed trash. So we're probably at a point in our return at that point where we're going to have to address everything. Other than that, I mean, I hope we were able to kind of, you know, address your guys' questions or concerns. And I guess I'll look forward to seeing the, the meeting minutes and your guys' recommendation.
All right. Tried to keep the noise to a minimum for you. With respect to Commissioner Hernandez's interest in following the project, well, being more active in the project in the form of a task force or something, I, I want to say that I, I am interested in the project. But at this point, I'm, I'm not clear on what our value add is. I think that the, you know, maintaining the visibility on the project as it moves through its processes well achieved by being in touch with planning commissioners and, you know, pinging, asking staff to give us regular updates. It's not that I, you know, me, I love to roll up my sleeves and get into these things, but I'm unclear on what we would, what value we would add. Help me understand, Rick, what it is you might want to do or whether you think tracking it is sufficient at this point?
Well, I, I, I would appreciate updates at our planning commission meetings, our regularly scheduled planning commission meetings as we move forward on this topic. I would like to see a recommendation from city staff as to a governance model that may help improve this process. So should we have a subcommittee combination of city council, planning commission, or some other body that can help us better track this and make sure the community is appropriately notified of what's happening and able to engage in this process. That's really it. I, I, I don't want to, like, our city staff is very thoughtful and very careful in how they approach things. And as John Doughty said, he was surprised by some of the information that came forth. So I don't feel as bad because I know how much attention he pays to these issues. I just think that as a, as a public body, we have an obligation to work with city staff, get a recommendation from them is what is the best path forward? How can we help? Sometimes folks like us don't help. We make the problem worse. So we just would like to get a recommendation from city staff as to, hey, what can we do to help here? What's appropriate? What's going to help us move the, move this issue forward in a way that helps us mitigate or forestall potential disaster for our community? Does that help, Jimmy?
I think I understand a little better. So you're, what you're saying is, you know, we're not trying to, you know, add, add extra hands and minds to a project that could slow the project down. But if there's something where you think there's value to be added, you're putting yourself up there as being willing to look at it, is that right?
I'm absolutely willing to help and am happy to participate. I think it's what I signed up for when I joined the planning commission. I think my point is this particular project before us, let's move, you know, let's, we support it. I think I've heard broad support for this from the planning commission. I'm just worried about the next step. What do we do as the next step? How do we make sure that we're giving this the appropriate level of attention it deserves? And I'm happy to volunteer my time to apply that towards the next step, whatever our city staff thinks would be appropriate.
Well, my suggestion, I, you know, of course, I'm just one member, but I'd like to give the staff a chance to reflect. First of all, Kristoff is coming back with the evidence that we need to support findings. We can't act tonight. And so I'm, you know, maybe while we have that time, the chance, you know, to have a dialogue with staff to see what, if anything, you know, other than, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pogar, was that you?
Yeah, I wanted to, I had something. Go ahead. Sorry. I, my audio cut out. I thought you were done talking. Go ahead.
No worries. I was just going to say, you know, it's not that I'm not interested, I am. But I'm, I want to be sure that we're putting, you know, we have a safety element which might be a place where we can inject things like this in a more systemic way so that it's not just about this particular problem, but any of a number of other hazards that we need to coordinate work on and find ways to Coordinate work on and find ways to prioritize independently. And then figure out how to use the dollars that are available and the grant dollars that we might choose to seek. In order to get those goals done, maybe the safety element is closer to the wheelhouse. Of the planning commission. With respect to that, but, you know, I I don't want to speak for staff. It may be. Better to let them reflect on your interest. And, you know, maybe have a dialogue at the next meeting or even before if 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 that would be helpful.
I I think we should try to combine these things and wait for the next meeting. So I I I know we all have. Many things on our plates these days. And so if city staff is in agreement, I'd like to just. Have them come back to us with a recommendation when this item is brought back to us.
Can I add a couple things?
Sarah.
So I I think that one thing might be, I I actually wouldn't want to see like a task force at this point. But I do think that there's a lot of, this is almost like a the section. Between, you know, from Kelly down to the Ritz, you know, there's, it's like a shoreline unit. And there are a lot of different things that are going on and and kind of interacting in terms of impacts. And related to erosion, drainage, et cetera. And it would be helpful, I think, to understand a little bit better of what's going on in terms of the. Connect connection of the the looking at the erosion between Poplar and Kelly. And then what's going on with this, how that, you know, and then also what's going on with some of the the work that's around the Seymour. Water course. So that could be a helpful thing for the public to be or our community to be more aware of. I'll just put this, a couple of things out there. One is when I've done presentations to. Local fifth grade classes, I use this area like just south of here as a great case study about. Cause there's a lot, there's a lot of different landowners and different interests and and kind of goals and needs. That are going on in this area, coastal access, we have the landfill, we have, you know, habitat, you know, protection, public. You know, park, you know, we got a lot going on. So it's a really super interesting and challenging area. And so I just, I do think that there's some value in kind of considering more broadly what's going on throughout this this whole section of shoreline and getting a little more. Like having some presentation about that to help people understand that these aren't just one. Individual projects that are happening in isolation. They're actually, there's a lot of inter- interaction. So that's one thing. I do think that would be helpful. I don't, I agree with your comment, Jimmy, about making really clear what where we're value added. But I'd be happy to help. This is area I'm very interested in for sure and already doing a lot of stuff with. I would also say that I just wanted, this is off subject, but I just want to throw a shout out to Chair Benjamin. And to Jill, Jill, you know, so Jill and Jimmy, because they did come to those sea level rise meetings in San Mateo County. This is back when I worked for BCDC and was helping to run them. They were there and they got this on the table and it was, we would not have had. Even be even be here at this point of like looking for better solutions to this, for this landfill, closed landfill. So our community, we have big thanks to them for for getting out there. Those aren't fun meetings to go to.
That's very kind of you, Commissioner Polgar. Thank you. Jill did more heavy lifting than I did. I just showed up. So. I know that this area is a subject which is, it has a lot of presence for many members of our planning commission. And of course, it's the subject of. Tonight's discussion of the item that once we're having a public hearing. But I'll just tangentially remind the my colleagues that, you know, we have. A in addition to the Seymour water course in this block area, we have impoundments above. Homes in the area, we have a Pullman water course that's eroding coastal access in a state beach area. We have a number of state beach parking areas that are subject to significant erosion problems. We have development in the Roosevelt water course flood plain and the problems that are attended with it. And I I just want to be sure that as we make decisions about how to invest our staff time and see grant money. And do the things that we need to do, that we don't develop a hyper focus on a project that we're familiar with. I think it's, this is important, but we need to. Be sure that we're in a position to multicast. And that's why I'm a little hesitant to jump in with both feet and say, yes, let's. Initiate a task force and, you know, be about this. As quickly as, and I appreciate that, Rick, that you're not going there. So I I do think it makes sense to get, you know, a clarity on what value add. We can bring to the table and how we can manage to keep the various plates spinning. On all of the remediations that are on our our. Our plate, if you'll forgive the mixed metaphor right now, because there are many. But with respect to this project and Kristoff's ability to have what he needs to. For the city to be, the commission to be satisfied enough to move forward with a a CDP. It sounds like he has the feedback that he needs to staff. Do you feel like you have the feedback that you need? Thumbs up from the directors, Brittany looks okay?
We do, we are. As speaking with our recommendation from your staff report to requesting the. Commission to consider continuing this item to a date certain. And I believe that we could be ready for your November 10th meeting.
November 10 would work for you, Kristoff.
Yeah, I will be out on paternity leave, but I will, somebody will be attending.
Okay. Any other comments, commissioners?
I just want to say congratulations to Kristoff on his young baby and. Thanks for, you know, continuing to work through this and work on that and, you know, keeping up your service. And I think we should let him go and enjoy his family now.
Here, here.
Mazel tov. Could we have a motion to continue this meeting to November 10, was it?
I make a motion to continue this meeting to November 10.
Sorry, not this meeting, this item, my bad.
This item to November 10.
Thank you. Second by Commissioner Polgar, a roll call vote, please, Bridget.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Reddick?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin.
Yes, thank you very much. Then we are on to the next item on our. Public hearing docket, which is the coastal development permit we discussed at our previous. At a previous meeting on Chancery Zay and this item is in Scotts Inn basket.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission.
Thank you for waiting.
My pleasure. I'll go ahead and share my screen and jump right into a quick PowerPoint presentation to. Show everyone the changes that have been made. All right, can everyone see that? Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, so this is an item that was continued from. September 22nd. And. So the the main change that's taken place since the commission has. In fact, include minor changes to the landscaping and then changes to the grading and drainage plan. And the architecture has remained the same. So no changes have taken place to the the actual. Proposed new two-story building. Just a little refresher, this is, this slide shows the site. It's on the the east side of the north cul-de-sac of Chancery Zay Boulevard. Next to Roosevelt Naples Creek. And at the previous commission meeting. The discussion centered around drainage improvements as it relates to the 30-foot riparian buffer. Rating amounts related to the new spa appropriateness of the new of the plant pallet. And one little concern about accuracy of one of the. Property lines on the survey. Here is the old landscape plan. And then I'll look to the new one. And notice that. Change that you'll notice on screen is that riparian appropriate plants have been added to the riparian buffer along the north there. As as well as a new split rail fence added along the buffer edge, which was a previous condition of approval. And hard to read, but I just wanted to point out that the landscape architect actually provided two separate plant pallets. One for the the buffer and one for the rest of the property. And with the exception of potocarpus, all plants are California native. And many of the plants within the plant pallet on the left are erosion resistant plants selected for the buffer. And the bio, the biologist botanist has reviewed the plant pallet and no invasives have been identified. And then the previous planning commission meeting, there was some discussion or request for more detail about the spa. And a spa cross section was added to the landscape plan, showing the depth and the amount of grading that would take place associated with this new spa. And then just as a reminder, this is, this slide shows the previous grading and drainage plan that was included in the plans. And shortly after the last meeting. A more detailed grading and drainage plan prepared by a civil engineer was submitted and reviewed. Several rounds of changes took place and then this is the the end result. And you'll notice that the. The required detention basin has been relocated from the buffer area to between the two driveways. And I tried to illustrate that with the the red box there. That's where the new detention basin would go. And estimated grading and. Updated to include the new spa and would show a potential off-haul of about 15 cubic yards. Engineering staff reviewed in detail the grading and drainage plan. As well as the detention basin calculations that were included in the staff report. And engineering staff, they're, they are supportive of the the new approach to the grading and drainage for this project. And then as far as the, you know, the the concern about accuracy of the survey. We reached out to the applicant and he he reached out to his surveyor. The surveyor provided a letter explaining how he went about establishing the location of the southern boundary. And as mentioned in the letter, he does state that it is accurate. And with that, I'm, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have the the project civil engineer. On the call this evening as well as the landscape architect and the biologist. And and also the applicant. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Scott. Before we go further, I should report an ex parte communication that I had. I walked down to the neighborhood this weekend to have a look at the drainage and spoke with. Neighbor who lives at the corner of Roosevelt and Chancery Zay. Who told me on no uncertain terms that there is drainage from. Naples or Roosevelt Creek into the cul-de-sac and then coming around the corner. At the last meeting, we heard testimony that that didn't happen. And I thought it might be pertinent for you to know that. They were very clear that 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 did happen. So. I will add that to your list. Thank you for letting me place that before we go any further into the conversation. And who would ask clarifying questions, if any?
Commissioner Hernandez.
Commissioner Hernandez, thank you.
Scott, as the planner on this project. I know staff has a recommendation, but can you express your feedback? On what the applicant has done to address our concerns? And your opinion as to whether or not this. Satisfies the issues we raised during our last planning commission meeting.
Yeah, in my opinion, the applicant has been very responsive and easy to get a hold of and. You know, quick to to engage with the civil engineer and landscape architect. And, you know, we had. One virtual Zoom meeting with the whole team. You know, I've had several phone calls and, you know. He was, he's, he's been. You know, very responsive. So, you know, and in my opinion, I, you know, and. You know, the, he's, he's certainly addressed the concerns that have been brought up at the the previous meeting and. No reluctance on, you know, relocating items that were previously shown in the in the buffer to outside the buffer and. Yeah.
So so two two follow-up points. The first point is. The, as a layperson, when I, and I I miss having my commissioner Tom. On this. This body because he always had strong opinions and very insightful analyses of landscape plans. This looks night and day to me as a layperson. I I think that they've really gone the extra mile on the landscape plan. To address the concerns we've raised. Do you agree with that observation?
Yes, absolutely. And in my experience, normally when we have the botanist review the plant pallet. There, there's usually at least one, you know, recommended change. When the button is reviewed at this time, they're, they're, they're in total agreement that it was acceptable. So I was happy to see that.
That's great to hear.
We also have the landscape.
Please continue.
Call from this evening, so.
Okay, so so the the final follow-up question I had was just to echo or. Dig into the point that Commissioner Chairman Benjamin raised, which was. Around the drainage issues, you know, we've. We know this general area as commissioners, as citizens of Half Moon Bay. Who dig into these details were familiar with the general problems that happened here. Do you have any? Can you comment on what we've done to address the drainage? I mean, I heard your initial comments. I'm concerned about the comments that Chairman Benjamin raised around the the drainage here. Does our engineering staff have a strong opinion as to whether or not we've mitigated the drainage issues here?
You know, I I I think for starters, it makes sense to to look at the existing condition. And then the proposed project and what what is the delta? And the existing condition is is that there is no stormwater detention on site or minimal. The new project has the detention basin and would actually detain stormwater on site. So there is a change there. And then, John, I'm sure you have some to add add to that as far as engineering and public works perspective.
I think you're, you touched on really the issue, which is that we're going from absolutely no. Stormwater control to meeting at least our standards for. New development. So, you know, I, no one, I I'm, I'm surprised there was comment the last time around. I I absolutely. Are, I'm aware and I've, I have pictures somewhere in my, in my, in my folders. Of of cars at the, you know, with water up to the doors. Now, whether that was all, you know, coming from Pullman's side, whether it's coming from the Roosevelt, it's always hard to figure out in in these events. But but we know. But but we know that at times that neighborhood can become fairly inundated with with storm and with stormwater. You know, I don't think that this this property and this project can resolve that and can fix that alone. And from the perspective of what we stand our standard is, is that the project itself meets the requirements for stormwater detention and release, it's doing that.
And it and just to reiterate, yeah, if I just sorry, chairman, if I may to follow up on the point in the professional opinion of city staff, it improves on the existing conditions. Is that fair?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm done with my questions.
Thank you. And I just want I I should clarify that I was offering that information because it was part of the body of thinking. I didn't mean to impose it as a deliberation step right now, but I I thought it was it was material for you to hear that, even if it was not a surprise to Director Dowdy. So other questions, Commissioner Holt.
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
I don't have any.
Okay, Vice Chair Riddick.
No questions, Jimmy. Thanks.
One question from me then to the to the landscape architect with respect to the plant palette. Scott, could you put back up the plant palette so that we can have a good look at the plants in the riparian buffer? While he's pulling that up, when I went to visit the site, I noticed just how devoid of vegetation the incised area of the bank was in this area. And my concern with respect to the plants was that a plant that would normally do a great job of taking hold and holding soil in a riparian area needs to be able to establish itself, or things may not go well for the plants. And I was just, you know, when we were talking about it earlier, we talked about salix, maybe it was in here. I see junkus, sounds like a great choice. Do you feel like there's that we have a a method of helping the plants secure a foothold in this area so that they know that they're able to establish themselves and hold during significant flow events?
Mr. Benjamin, this is Karen Aiken. I'm the landscape architect that plans. You know, I I put in an assortment of what you'd call you know, erosion control and and plants that are often used for bioretention plants with the grasses. Now, interestingly, the note that I've gotten from the planning department was to avoid putting any artificial irrigation on this space. So there we all know is a challenge for the first year at least of getting plants established. So if if there's any advice to be given, I would appreciate it how we are to accomplish that. It's especially complicated in that there's a large grove of eucalyptus trees all along the north side, and that will challenge any plant to grow very well. A lot of invasive species. There's ginger, yucca, canna, it's kind of a tropical mix peppered in there.
Right. And, you know, I I am, it's sort of like, I'm not the go to person for architecture taste. I am not a super knowledgeable plant guy. Our planning director is very good. Commissioner Pogar is very good. So I'll be certainly interested in their in their take on this. Perhaps there's some reason why we wouldn't want them to be able to irrigate in the for the objective of establishing. You know, I don't know how low the water table is in this area. I would have felt Willow stakes might have had a shot. Did you give them consideration?
I'm I'm sorry, what is that question?
Did you consider salix, Willow?
Oh, I well, the the salix, I I don't know, I think that one's it gets awfully large and invasive in its own right way. So I don't know as I would want to be proposing that.
I see. So in by I assumed by invasive, you were describing non-native invasive as opposed to
Yeah, salix is is native, yet it just gets so overly large and spreads so much.
And and blackberry, was that a possibility? Doesn't get as large.
That that'd be a possibility, certainly. A prickly possibility, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my Yes, Commissioner.
I I'm concerned, having had blackberry and raspberry on my property, I I'm concerned that we're we're litigating details about a property owner's property that may be a little beyond our normal purview. I I I think that the landscape, my suggestion, my humble suggestion is the landscape architect would like set of plants that fit in the palette, that don't dominate the view, that can survive eucalyptus. I think those things are acceptable. I I I'm always concerned about us litigating the design issues. I am interested in city staff's response on the irrigation question.
If we get, once we get into that dialogue, right now, I'm just trying to explore why the choices. So I'm with you. I'm interested in the opinion, but let me just get through the the questions rather than try to, I'm not trying to defend the choices or change the choices. I'm just trying to understand them, if that's all right.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. So, yeah, I mean, so I my takeaway from your comment is that establishment without irrigation is a challenge and you're open to understanding how we might, you know, what arrangements we could make to try to achieve that. And, you know, the the, you know, we can talk about the palette and defer where we can. But the goal is to find something that is going to be able to take hold in the area, no matter how we do it. So this is a this was my chance to sort of have a closer look at the at the species so that I could get a feel for it. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I have no other questions. Did you have any other thoughts before we go to the public hearing?
I'm sorry, Mr. Benjamin addressed to myself?
Yeah, if you have, I mean, we're not at the point where we're trying to answer questions. But, you know, other than clarifying questions to what the proposal is. So I was asking to try to understand what were the limits of the of the plant choices that you had made. I understand your answer is what you could what you thought you could establish without irrigation.
Yes, the best possibility for survival in that challenging spot. That's all.
I understand. Okay, thank you. Okay, no other questions then? Clarify? In that case, let's open the public hearing again. And Bridget, do we have speakers?
I see no one raising their hands.
All right. In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing again and bring it back to to the commission and with your forbearance, I'd like to hear from staff about the irrigation matter. So that I have a, you know, I I think we all are on the same page in terms of objectives. But we know that disturbed riparian corridors sometimes don't let native plants restore if there's too much water rushing by. So what what are your thoughts about this?
Oh, I thank you, Chair. Scott and I haven't had a chance to dive into this deeply, but I I'm gonna go first and then he can mop up if I make a mess. What I think is really important here is to not install a permanent irrigation system, which is probably staff's real intent to the landscape architect to direct away from that. If they need to run a dripper hose during the hottest summer months to have some just a little bit of sustaining water for a couple of seasons, that would be fine. Just sitting on top of the earth, no soil disturbance. We're really concerned about erosion, and that was the whole purpose of this palette. And so having having something more serious with regards to an irrigation system was concerning. Clearly, the 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 palette for the project as a whole now and the aesthetic, the choices that the landscape architect made on on all sides of this project, they really make sense. They have, she's she's, I I haven't had a chance actually to to speak with her, but just even even taking care to not have tall plants in the sight distance triangle of the driveway. I mean, there's there's a lot of care went into this plan. It's really, really clear to us. So I think I think we can figure out a way to provide something that's got a light touch and is hopefully temporary.
You're muted, Jimmy.
I apologize. Yeah, my goal in asking these questions was not to change the palette choice, but to try to understand whether there was a probability of success without irrigation. And if so, what sorts of irrigation would be, you know, avoid impacts and not raise the hackles of the coastal commission or any of the other jurisdictional agencies. So thank you for the clarification and I apologize, Commissioner Hernandez. I did not mean to cut you off, but I wanted to have a chance to try to clarify my my basis for raising the concern.
I do not feel cut off at all. I feel like we're having an appropriate professional engagement.
You are the man, sir. Other comments?
I mean, if we're are we an internal discussion now?
We we have brought it back to the commission. We closed the public hearing. You can hold forth.
So I'm supportive of this project. I really appreciate both the design of the structure as well as the design of the the new landscape architecture plan. I think they reflect what we're looking for in our community broadly. I I I think if we can give some dispensation for short term irrigation, I'm supportive of that. But I I find this to be a compelling project that improves the visual aesthetic as well as the drainage concerns that the neighbors have. So I'm very supportive of this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners?
I would concur and I would just, you know, extend my thanks and gratitude to the applicant for, you know, bearing with the the commission as this discussion goes on and working with staff and being responsive to the concerns. So I I appreciate the the response that comes back and and supportive.
Thank you. Vice Chair Riddick, you're good?
Yeah, I I feel much the same way. I think that the applicant and Scott have had a good process to be responsive to what we raised in September. I'm happy to see a little bit of language now taking extra care to protect the to delineate and protect the buffer. The landscaping palette is is certainly first rate and the and moving the detention basin makes all the sense in the world. So I, yeah, I'm I'm support this very much.
And Commissioner Pogar?
Yeah, I echo the other commissioners, especially Commissioner Riddick's comments. And also, but I I do agree, I think Commissioner Hernandez noted that if there's a way to allow for irrigation in the interim, I I because I I agree, I just don't see how the plants are going to establish. And that'd be a shame to go to the effort of putting them in without having the the irrigation. But I understand not wanting it permanently, but I think we should, I don't know if we need to add that as a is is a condition, or if that can just be something staff can work out with the applicant, that'd be great. But yeah, I I very much appreciate the the changes and I'm supportive of the project.
So it sounds like it's pretty much everybody feels the same way about this. I love it when a project comes together. So there is there is a condition with respect to what's permitted in the buffer area. And staff, you're you think you can get the temporary irrigation in and out without changing it? Or do you feel like we're where we need to be as it is?
You know, I I think as long as it's temporary and, you know, you know, the temporary drip line to for initial establishments. I think if that's noted on the landscape plan submitted with the building permits and real calculations, then I think that would be sufficient.
And the
Through the chair?
Oh, yes, Commissioner Hernandez. Thank you.
Can I just 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 to, the applicant has gone above and beyond. Can I just make a recommendation that we just attach a, hey, we the planning commission supports temporary irrigation. And as long as it's temporary and city staff can work out the details, just just so we remove uncertainty from the applicant's perspective. And because because when people go above and beyond, we want to create clarity for those people as much as we can. When people don't go above and beyond, I I'm less amenable. But I think this is an example where you have an applicant with a great project, great design, you listen to the feedback we had. I just want to create that clarity so they don't have any kind of ambiguity going into this.
So why don't you make a motion to approve with the added condition?
I make a motion to approve the project with the added condition that we provide for temporary irrigation to be determined or to be reviewed and approved by city staff.
Is there a second to that motion? A second, but staff, is that sufficient query for you to move forward?
Yes.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Pogar?
Yes.
Christopher Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin?
Yes.
Motion in effect.
Thank you very much. I also thank the applicant and the applicant's experts for working out these changes. And the commission really stuck with it, got a great project for the for the trouble. So thank you, Scott. Thank you, Jill. Thanks to Maz, everyone for drilling down and making this project a better project. I appreciate it. That concludes our public hearing items, and we move on to the director's report. So, Director.
Scott, you might want to turn off your camera.
All right. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commission. We had a very interesting combination of things tonight, and we really appreciate that. And this is a really exciting director's report, folks. I don't know if you see.
I think we know what that might be.
We are so delighted to just enjoy the moment with you and thank the commission for delivering this document, this land use plan to the city council in the condition that it was in, which was excellent. And council has now adopted the plan and staff is in we're we're scurrying and preparing it for our submittal to the California Coastal Commission. That's not a slam dunk kind of thing. They require quite a few documents. We've been putting them together for some time. It's a significant package and we're trying to get that to them before Thanksgiving. We just want you to know, you you've got your land use plan and it is up on the website. The revisions that council made are are going to be completely incorporated into it and we will and we will maintain links to the draft plan and be very clear that it's draft while we're waiting for coastal commission certification. Next steps for coastal commission, on, once they receive our complete application, they will have three months to give it a good look and decide if they're going to need, they can get a one-year extension in considering it, or if they're able to move quicker into certification. Staff is just going to be readily available to them to provide any technical studies, discussion, any, any modifications that are within the scope of the planning commission and city council's actions. We will do our best to color in the lines. I think you know that we're, we're devoted to the cause of, of bringing your plan forward, which is really the, the community's plan. So congratulations to you, we, just real. And, all right, your agenda forecast, November 10th, your next meeting, as you, you now have a continued item for the Boring's project, and we will be happy to bring that back, answering those questions that came up tonight. As Scott is going to be bringing mixed-use project 795 Main Street. So we'll have a, a full agenda for November 10th. At your last meeting, we anticipated canceling the November 24th meeting, but we have a couple of projects that are ready, and it would be very nice to be able to bring them forward because we only have one meeting in December, and it, it can really delay folks quite a bit to, to have to kick into January. So we did pool you to make sure you're available. And of course, on the flip side of that is the chair reminding me how important it is, of course, that we really get the word out and we're clear to not have controversial projects Thanksgiving week that we give people bid notice. And in this case, one of the two projects that is going forward is a parcel map. It's proposed at 555 Seymour, and it has an initial study and negative declaration, on, which means those documents, that document has to be ready at least 20 days in advance of your action. So in terms of having some lead time on materials, that will be posted on the website, and we'll get it to the commission in advance of the packet. I'm hoping we can have the staff report early as well. I can't quite commit to that, but do know in the initial study negative declaration, there is a project description. And so it, it is a document that should stand on its own for the purposes of really introducing and assessing the proposal. We may also have a single-family home that is nearing readiness. It has been reviewed twice by the Architectural Advisory Committee because it had some exceptions and, and/or variances required, and it's improved significantly, and we, we would like to move it along if we can. So we'll, we'll see if it's ready. If it's not, you will just have the parcel map if, if that's acceptable to the commission. We are hoping on December 8th to bring you Carter Park, which is also a sequoia-oriented item for you. It has an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration and a coastal development permit for phased improvements. And that would be your last meeting for 2020. Many other things are waiting in the wings, and so we'll update you about those as they're getting closer to readiness. And would like to cover some things that have been in the council, city council venue.
Through the chair?
Yep.
Yes, Commissioner.
The 555 Seymour, is that the yellow house on Seymour, or is that the former church on Seymour?
That is the site of the former church that has been converted into a house, which was previously reviewed for a coastal development permit. This is a follow-on item with a, it's a very large site, and the proposal is to subdivide one parcel into three. One of the three parcels would be for the converted. Well, it, it was a house that converted to a church that now converted back to a house. And then it would be two new lots.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. In addition to the land use plan on October 20th, council on their consent calendar extended a tentative map for the Creekside subdivision. This is a subdivision that you approved three years ago, or you recommended approval to council three years ago. And the map would expire at three years, and council did approve a one-year extension. Our subdivision ordinance provides for several one-year extensions, but only one year at a time. We needed a little bit more time to work through a few items, and frankly, the logistics of us working with our applicant and kind of across our, our different disciplines have been challenged in our remote working environment. Engineering has been, of course, working with the applicant on all the details for the infrastructure and drainage and the street improvements, et cetera. And I'm working with them along with Winter King, who is helping us with the affordable housing agreement. The affordable housing agreement is a condition of approval, and it must be approved before or concurrently with any final map that would go to the city council. So we just wanted you to know that that is still moving along. And when it does go to council, we'll, we'll let you know how that, how that comes to be and the details on that affordable housing agreement. On November 17th, I will be bringing a confirmation agreement to council with respect to the city's grant funding through HCD to support development of our housing element through a county group that we've talked about several times, the 21 Elements Group. And all of the cities are, are contributing to this. It's, it's a very good support system for preparing a housing element, and you can expect that they will be presenting to you at some point in time as we move forward with that. Right now, it's in a phase where staff is going to be developing a lot of data for them, a lot of site analyses, and what's fabulous about our timing is we have all of that information right now at our fingertips because we just updated so much with your, with your land use plan and GIS mapping. So we're, we're enjoying being able to use the fruit of all of that work. On December 1st, we'll bring the Measure D allocations to council. This is something that's been at their December meeting every year, and that's where we set the number of allocations for, in this case, will be for 2021, and including the distribution between the downtown and the outside of downtown allocations. And that will wrap up the department's activity with city council through the end of the year. I don't have any director items immediately pending, so we'll update you on that at your next meeting. The Architectural Advisory Committee did meet on October 15th to look at 2778 Pullman, a proposed new single-family home. I believe that the story polls are still up. This is one of the four lots in the Stoloski-Gonzalez subdivision. If you hadn't, haven't had a chance to see them, we'd encourage you to go take a look now because they're, they need to come down with, with weather conditions. And so it'd be a good chance to just, just swing over there and take a look at that. The next Architectural Advisory Committee meeting will be November 19th. Right now, we know that a facade upgrades and site upgrades associated with a portion of the Straw Flowers Shopping Center will be brought to the, to the committee, and we think that they will be just the perfect group to take a look at this because of the combination of landscaping and architecture without really changing the land use. It's a, it's a nice facelift type of project. And we are hoping that the architectural designs will be ready for the Main and Kelly project. That's the former gas station site that's across the street from City Hall, and that, that can go to the committee on November 19th. And that is our report for tonight. Thank you.
You. Are there questions on the director's report? Additional questions? Commissioner Hernandez? No, you, you were unmuted. I thought that was a request. So I just had one question, Jill. So I did drive by and look at the story polls in the Stoloski subdivision. Clearly not on the agenda tonight, clearly still in the ARC's court. And I want to be respectful of that process and, you know, raise any questions or ask, make suggestions or comment at an appropriate time and not before. And so I just wonder if you could remind me, and perhaps the other commissioners might also be interested in, you know, when is the appropriate time so that we're not stepping on toes? And what are the appropriate vehicles we're doing?
We appreciate the question. I need to be fair to staff here. We, we're still dissecting the Architectural Advisory Committee's comments on this, and I, I have not had a chance to work with staff on the next best steps for that project, so.
Let me, let me phrase the question more generally, because this is absolutely not about that project. It's just, you know, their, their body provides recommendations to us. If we reach out and say, we think your recommendation should be this, that doesn't feel like it would be, you know, testifying at a meeting feels like it might be overreach. So trying to find the productive avenue that says, that respects the separations of responsibilities and doesn't horn in in a way that's not appropriate.
Well, you can always reach out to staff, and we will preserve your Brown Act integrity needs. And we can, we're happy to discuss project details with you if you have questions about it or any, any questions or concerns or interests in understanding how the code or policies or architectural design details may, may relate to the project. We're always, we're always happy to do that. Of course, we, we don't have a notice public hearing before you. We don't, we didn't anticipate having a study session on the project. I, I am looking at all the options right now, so we will, we can update you a little bit more, but it is always okay to reach out to staff.
Right, but in particular, if we went to, if we went to an architectural review committee hearing, should we be hesitant to speak in public?
I'm gonna just check in with our city attorney.
Thought you might.
See what her case.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Up your volume. She's coming.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes? Oh, great. And I was just gonna say, I think you hit the nail on the head, Chair Benjamin, that the, the purpose of the Architectural Advisory Committee is to consider the matter and provide advice up to you. And so I would recommend that an appropriate respect for that division of labor would be if you attend the committee meeting, not to weigh in with the comments at that time. You'll have ample opportunity to consider what their recommendation is and talk about the project when it comes before the commission.
Very good.
And I want to add one thing. That said, if the planning commissioners, if any of you would ever want to just observe, we encourage you to do so. The design review process is interesting, it's informative, and we think it might be, you know, worth your time from time to time for, for different projects. We are, as staff, we're, we're enjoying working with this group very much.
Okay, great. I had no other questions. It sounds like nobody else had any other questions. Is that true?
I just wanted to say another, you know, thanks and congratulations to Jill and Brittany for, for the local coastal land use plan. It was, it was a huge lift, and it's exciting to see it. Moving on to the next step.
You're here.
So colleagues, I wrote just a letter, a thank you letter as an individual for the work that they did. If you feel it would be worthwhile and you would agree, I'd be happy to pin a letter on behalf of the commission to thank the city for their contributions. Is that the will of the commission? Would that be a sense of the commission to write?
I, I really support that, but I would also, if it's appropriate, and if it's not appropriate here, we can maybe table it as a future item. I'd like to issue a commendation from the, not just the letter, but a commendation from the planning commission for the work that city staff has done because it's been top-notch, and there are some key participants who have done yeoman's work to help us get where we're at. So I, I, I think we should, a letter, I absolutely support today, but if we can do some kind of commendation and public recognition of the work that's been done, I would heartily support that.
I'm watching the director looking mildly mortified. But, you know, it's, it's our conversation, it's our commission. I don't know, I, I don't know if there's such a thing as a planning commission commendation, but I know that we can write letters. Why don't we, why don't we investigate the commendation question just for the mechanics, not because it's not a great idea? But if you like, if there, you know, maybe I'll just say barring objection, I, it would be my pleasure to write a letter on behalf of the commission.
I support that.
Sounds great, Jimmy.
I'm seeing-
I definitely support that.
Okay, that will be my pleasure. Thank you for giving me the authority to do that. Sorry, Jill, you have to live with that. Brittany, wherever you are, winter.
We just-
Bridget?
Through the chair, we, we're just hoping that when we get certified, which we are feeling very hopeful for, that we can celebrate with you in person. It would be very nice.
Yeah, that would be truly something to be thankful for. It has been a long. And hopefully, you know, this is an important waypoint. We all know that there's an implementing ordinance coming. And, you know, it's important to celebrate your, your advances when they hit like this, so thank you. I think it's time for us to move to the planning commission communications. Does anyone have any planning commission communications? Well, it's probably more in the adjournment area, but I will say that since our last, oh, I'm sorry, was there someone who wanted to speak? Did I miss a hand?
I have one item.
Yes, Commissioner Hernandez?
I, I know that we've removed the, the compressor garbage cans by Poplar Beach. We've also removed the regular garbage cans by Poplar Beach. We only have dumpsters there for visitors and for the locals. And so I, I know that Measure Doughty is working on a plan to get regular garbage cans back on Poplar Beach. But on behalf of our tight-knit coastal community in the Poplar Beach area, can you please get some garbage cans back a little bit quicker? People are looking for that. It would be really helpful, and it would help mitigate some of the garbage. We've also observed a pretty significant number of beach fires, and I, I don't want to be the guy who says we need to get rid of fires. There are plenty of people who do that. But I also think in the time that we're living in right now, it'd be great if we could take some actions as a city to just put out the fires in the morning, or have somebody help with that, or have some bucket brigades. Or have some bucket brigades, whatever it is. But, but there are definitely some concerns about smoke in the mornings on Poplar Beach.
Okay, thank you for the, thank you for the communicate. Any other commissioner communications? No one was worried about those fireworks during the last red flag warning? I was the only one that heard those. Okay.
Well, you don't have the, you don't have this, the small arms fire happening in our neighborhood. People are like doing range shooting.
You're worried about garbage cans, just thinking garbage cans.
I'm not worried about, yeah, yeah, we, we hear all these things in our neighborhood.
I'm just having. On a, on a somewhat more serious note, I should point out whether it's a combination of the commission communications or it's an adjournment item, that we had a loss in the family since our last meeting. As many of you know, John Lynch has moved on to his eternal reward since our last meeting. John was a dedicated member of the community, but you're probably also all aware that he was a member of the many public agencies. He served as a foreperson for the Seminole County Grand Jury and he served on this planning commission. We also lost Chris Tolan, who was a member of the sand plant board representing Montero Water and Sewer and was a friend to Half Moon Bay, active as a neighbor, helping us look out for our needs over the long run. And I think that it would be appropriate when it's time to adjourn, to adjourn in their memory. If you feel that would be appropriate, I would certainly entertain a motion like that.
Commissioner Benjamin, I just wanted to point out that there was someone from the public that has raised their hand and I won't know by the name of Seth, and I don't know if you want to acknowledge it or not.
I think we are not in a public hearing section of the meeting, but as a matter of parliamentary procedure, if there's a point of information that is pertinent, I would invite Seth to state his point of information. If it's anything other than clarifying the state we're in and our current order of business, I don't think it's appropriate for us to receive the comment. Is that your position, Winter?
Yes, I think that sounds like an appropriate response.
Thank you. Seth, if you could please state your point of information.
Should be able to unmute.
Apology, I apologize for the interruption. I'm a newbie to the neighborhood and to the process here. I appreciate being able to raise my hand in the first place. I just was responding to Commissioner Hernandez's comments about the trash cans and the fires. And I didn't know when I raised my hand in, in support, so I, it's, I'm breaking protocol. I apologize, but thanks for even letting me speak. Ciao.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. We understand. So if there are no other communications, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that, that we adjourn in honor of our, our good friends, John Lynch and Chris Tolan, as Chair Benjamin has, has described.
I heartily endorse and second that motion.
Thank you. I think barring objection, we are adjourned.
Wow.
You guys.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Everyone, take care.